Great lead in to the discussion about need and what the impact is going to be particularly on the uh highway department crew. Um, given the challenges the current facility presents and um. Yeah, then we'll um, the, the general agenda, uh if folks hadn't heard previously is we're gonna start off with uh an expedited uh review of the feasibility study. Um, we're joined here tonight by Eric Johnson of the Select Board. Uh Matt Young from Ascent Consulting. Uh Matt has been uh working with me in the Select Board since the uh since the beginning of the uh conversation. Hey Tom.
How do you have any sign in?
Uh, there is not, just a public hearing. Actually, it probably should have been, but I don't know, I thought.
Okay.
Had their.
Hey, Matt Young.
Good to see you. Um, we will be um, yeah, reviewing the existing conditions um that Matt identified uh early on in the process. We'll give a brief overview of the proposed uh plan for the garage. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about the uh, the cost structure. And then the uh goal is to finish with a uh brief overview of the funding mechanism and the bond for payment uh for the facility. And uh what the uh tax valuation and um uh impact for uh voters will be looking at town meeting day. And then uh the hope again would be to finish with uh questions and answers. Um, seeing how few people are here. Um, if it's okay with everyone else, if you have a question as we go through the presentation part, um, I can keep an eye out for hands up. Doesn't have to be super formal. We don't have to necessarily wait until the end of the narrative pieces until uh, until we um ask and answer questions. So I'm gonna start off with the uh, the video.
So you're gonna have to.
You're gonna have to share your audio and video.
Yep. Thank you for the reminder.
Go to advanced. So you wanna, oh, yep, nope, you don't need to go to advanced. Go to, see at the, all the way to the left, share sound.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So you gotta click that.
Great.
Then click there, and then I think it will work.
Great. Oh, I don't want this. Where's that? Okay. Oh, I also want to.
I'm Wayne Howell, served on the Select Board for eight years, and I'm here to just uh give you a heads up about the proposal that'll come before voters about the Highway Department building. Uh, as you know, the Highway Department and Safety Services are almost fifty percent of the budget. Uh, it's an essential service and uh we need to pay attention to it. There's been some issues that have been revealed about the state of the building, and frankly, it's deplorable. There's uh, the heating issue that we had recently really brought the whole thing to the fore. But there's structural problems, uh, there's code issues, and we've got, we've got to deal with this. Uh, we want to protect our investment. Uh, we've got a lot of equipment there. But we also want to uh protect our investment in the Highway Department staff, which many people have been very pleased with uh what they've been doing, the job they've been doing. But I just want to urge you to support the bond vote that's coming up so we can provide shelter for our investments, the equipment, and also a proper place for our essential workers, which are the Highway Department crews.
The issues I see with the current garage is we have to special order trucks to fit inside, which costs us more money.
In future, we will be buying more equipment. There's no place to put it. There's no place to put everything we've got now.
I've noticed that the equipment that we spend a lot of money and time with, we have to leave outside or it's very difficult to get in and out of the building.
Looking for a new facility because the facility we have now, the town has outgrown, and as the town is growing, we're gonna outgrow it even more.
There are places where there are large holes or small animals can easily get into on a cold day like today. It's not a real comfortable place to be. Water system isn't great. Um, we deal with it, but that's, that's what life is. I've seen the garage grow. I've seen it from where it was originally. Uh, five bays wide to an eight bay garage now. And I've seen the equipment that we've put in as time has gone on. We have now outgrown what we've got now. In the future, I think it would be really nice for those people coming behind me to be in a building that is comfortable. Uh, water that they can drink. Uh, easy to be able to drive into. Uh, have space for enough for the large trucks that are coming. Uh, just because of the size of the town and, and all the roads that we have, large trucks are needed so that you can get your job done efficiently. That's what I see.
Can you hear us now?
Yeah, it was, it's working now.
There you go. Somehow I was adjusting the uh, the sound and once I hit the mute.
That'll do it.
That'll do it. Can everyone hear now?
Yep.
Excellent. Um. Trying to think how far back to go. So um, anyway, we will shift to uh reviewing the uh feasibility study that uh Matt undertook in conjunction with the road crew and Paula and I. Let me uh.
Will you sit up here?
Yeah, it's great, Matt. Thank you. Great. Okay, so we're gonna start off uh with a discussion of the uh, the existing conditions. So uh, looking at the fall, Matt came and did what, two onsite reviews?
Yep.
And uh interviewed the uh Highway Department crew, did an onsite uh inspection and uh shared the results following.
So on page nine of the report, I tried to summarize and capture, you know, the major components and, and concerns of the building, and I broke it into three sections, the exterior of the building, the interior, and the life safety. In general, the exterior things like um the snow loads, you know, the current current building does not meet the current required snow, snow loads. And the building is not efficient at all. It's, you know, you have gaps and within the uh, what we call is the uh. It says it's a pre-engineered metal building. It's a, it uh. The uh, it's called pillow insulation. Okay.
Somehow lost the screen. Okay, there we go. Okay, yeah, all of these, man. That's right. Can we keep one?
Yep. And you know, the overhead doors are really not adequate as far as the width and the building you can see, the, you know, when the equipment is sitting in the apparatus space. They're pretty tight and they're basically touching nose to, to rear. And that's a huge safety concern because if, if, or if a guy was ever had an issue on, in one of the bays, it'd be tough to get access to him without having to hop over. You're constantly hopping over other equipment just to get, get to where you need to go. Um, there's no, there's no drinking water out there, drinkable water. Um. And then we don't know where the septic or the toilet waste is going to. That's a big concern. Um, there is no stormwater management at the existing facility. And you know, with a lack of bays and there's more equipment you, you purchase, especially in the wintertime, you need to keep your equipment warm, especially with all the hydraulics that these, these equipment have. And there's not enough bays to accommodate a, all of the equipment. And you know, for the interior, we talked about the, the lack of the bathroom. There's, it's not an ADA bathroom. In fact, it's even, that's not even big enough for one person to be able to close the door if you were to use the bathroom that's out there. And uh, it does not have an inadequate eye wash system. They, they had to actually bring in a separate system just for the, for the eye wash because the existing water is not, is not drinkable. And on the life safety side, you know, I'm just gonna point out some things is that um, you know, there's no carbon monoxide sensor. Most current garages, whether it's for automotive or highway garage, um, by code, you have to have a carbon monoxide and exhaust sensor that once it reaches at a certain level, it automatically triggers the exhaust system. And because you do, you know, there's a lot of mechanical work that will get done inside the base, it's as important to have an ability to uh exhaust out from the tailpipe of, of a truck or a vehicle. And typically, there should be like a, they, they call that a primal vent system that should, should be in there, and there's not one there. Um, it, it, it doesn't have a sprinkler system in the building. And the, I know that you guys had put in additional heaters, but it's still not going to be adequate enough to maintain heat within the existing building because the building leaks, you know, thermally.
Great.
Um, so wha- what I did is, you know, I, I was involved in helping with Town of St. Albans, the town of Georgia. And looking at, I looked at your equipment, the, the size of the staff that you have. And, and basically, you guys kind of sat in between what Town of Georgia has and what the Town of St. Albans has for their garage. And what was proposed. Here we go to page thirteen.
So Matt, I'm thinking, can you uh, while we're on our way.
Oh, yeah, the location.
Can you talk a little bit about the uh the pillars location and some of the, some of the benefits that you identified with the site?
Yes, yeah. So I had looked at a couple of sites because one, um, the bene- the positive side that you guys have is you, you, you own land that you can put a uh, a new garage on, so you don't have to go out and invest and buy, purchase another piece of property for that. So that's a, that's a, that's an asset you have already on your side. And area A down here is where the existing garage is. And then I designated area A, and then area B up on top is one area that, that I had looked at, and then area C was another area. And then you could also see where the test pits were done. One thing that I've learned from past experience is that um, you gotta really know what's underneath the ground because that could impact your cost at the end of the day. And so that, so I highly recommended that a test pit be done right away, and we did that with the look, with the current garage staff with an excavator out there. And essentially, you know, there's a lot of sand out there. In fact, there's so much sand out there, you could actually make some money. There's some, there's some value to that.
I wouldn't dig too deep.
Yeah, so, so test pit one and two were done as a, as a uh potential site. So if you go up to the next part. And keep on. You can see that where the, with the test pit um results look like. And then you keep going. I think there should be a layout of the proposed site. There, right there, yeah. So area B was an area that um, that I recommended. It's not to say that this is where it's gonna land at the end of the day. I think once the uh, if the bond vote passes, these are some of the due diligence that, that will have to be looked at. And you guys will have to all ask the questions and is it the right, right location, but in order for me to be able to put a cause together, uh, I need to be able to quantify something and kind of start making some assumptions for the cost. And so the building itself, the way, what I had recommended is essentially what we call is a, it's a, it's a ten, it's a, sorry, it's a eight bay apparatus bay. But then you have another bay, which is, we call it as a mechanics bay. So if you go to the next sheet, right there.
Let me see if I can.
There you go, yeah. So if you go over to the left, all the way to the left, we're under the green shading. Essentially, the way these bays are set up, the most efficient bay sizes that I've found is that each bay should be at least twenty-two feet by sixty-eight, sixty-six to sixty-eight feet deep. When you do that, you, you, it allows you to build, excuse me, to bring in a truck with the plow on and still have adequate room in the front and then the back for the guys to be able to walk back and forth, and then also be able to have tools and equipment in front of the, of the trucks. And so typically, what has happened is that on the, the green shading, that I would say that bay, that portion of the building is where all the admin offices would be. That's where the, you know, the showers are, the bathrooms, the offices, the conference room, the break room, and, you know, things like that. And then the next bay over is what is considered as a mechanics bay. And this is typically where you'll have um, a lift sitting in there. Because what happens is once you have a, a lift and tools in one of the bays, it really precludes you from the ability to store equipment. So having the other bays of one through eight gives you the freedom to be able to, to actually store equipment in those bays on the cumber. And then the last bay is what we call is the wash bay. And this is essentially, it's a drive in and back out type of scenario. Um, some garages, they have a, a pole, you know, where you drive all the way through, and then you pull forward to exit out. But um, but to me, this is actually the least cost approach, but allows you to be able to have a full-size equipment to be um, to wash in a, in a heated environment. And then the profile on the bottom here, you could see it's a, a simple shed roof. It's the most cost-effective, cheapest way to build, build the roof. And you can see what the clearances are, what, what you get from that. Each of the doors will be approximately fourteen feet high. And then um, and then you have a clearance in the front, so that if you've ever had to lift the truck up the dump, you have that capability without banging into the roof structure. And then you have your, your, you know, the twelve-foot clearance in the, at the nose. Yeah.
Any questions out there about the footprint, building specifications? Program within the building?
So.
Are you done presenting? Is that what we're at now?
Yeah, you could. Well, it's up to you.
Yeah. We're gonna, yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna talk about cost and all that next.
Yeah.
Sure, plus, well, you're on a roll. I, I think you did a great job.
Okay. And so this building, it, it comes out to approximately six, I think you have to get fifteen, sixteen thousand four sixty? That's sixteen thousand four hundred fifty-six gross square feet. And that equates to a cost, what I call the brick and mortar cost, about four point one million dollars. And then you have another uh, you know, three hundred and ten thousand dollars for soft costs, design, project management, insurance. And then another two hundred and twenty-one thousand for owner contingency for a total project cost at four point six million dollars. Four point five, closer to four point five. And when I had estimated this, I included um escalation costs of, of, for inflation through next year, twenty-five. So, so the thought is that if, if the bond vote passes, you know, March of this year, it'll take almost a year of permitting, design phase. Project would bid out to the public probably around, I'd say, I think it's like January, February of of um twenty-five. And then construction would begin April of twenty-five and it'd be completed by January of twenty-six. So essentially, almost two years from now, it'll be complete. Ready, ready for moving.
Brian, we may be able to talk more about it when we uh talk about the bonding process, but one of the things that we discovered in our uh conversations with the uh, with the bond bank is that the um, there's numbers of different ways to structure the borrowing. You know, one would be because the first year is really committed primarily to permitting and design um, that we, you know, may not be as time pressed to, you know, should the, should the vote pass, we may not be as time pressed to jump into the um, bond cycle as immediately as we might have thought originally. We could apply uh, ARPA funds to offset some of those costs and then uh, bond closer to the following year when construction actually gets underway. Um, Matt, I was thinking, uh, can, can you quickly go, this is more of a detailed breakdown. Wondering if you could just give a somewhat brief overview of the, the program within the building and.
Sure. Really, the corn shell of the building is a, is a pre-engineered structure. And then it's uh wrapped in uh sandwich metal panels. Um, for the efficiency, for Vermont, state of Vermont efficiency, we're gonna have to have uh, at least a five-inch sandwich panel for the vertical walls and probably six to seven inches for the roof to get the high R value for the roof that's required. Um. This is probably one of the best pretty much a bomb-proof structure you could ask for, especially for a, you know, a building like of this type. Um, you know, the existing building that you have now, existing lot of the metal buildings you see now, uh, they've kind of gone away from doing the, the pillow insulation or, you know, that you see now, because, you know, they, they deteriorate much quicker. And by the time you, you actually press the uh, insulation against the steel framing in the columns, you're actually squishing it. So you went from having, let's say, if you need like a, a, an R value of at least, you know, twenty-two or better, by the time you get to the steel columns, you get squished down because you get the metal panel that, that goes right behind it and gets installed. So you're actually losing a lot of continuity of, of uh, energy efficiency. What this system, what it allows it to do is you have a solid five inches of rigid foam that's um laid in with metal on the inside, metal on the outside all the way around the building, solid, hundred percent, and same thing for the roof. Um, the existing old roof that's out there now, the roof that's out there, up there is a sandwich metal panel. It's actually, it, it, so it had a really good roof up there, but unfortunately, it's leaking right now.
Yeah, it's just old buildings or the newer building?
The, actually, this is the older building. The one on the left is the one that has the metal, because I think it must have been replaced. So that has the metal sandwich panel, which is great, ninety percent of it. But then what the failure is, is where the pitch is, is someone didn't do a good job with sealing where the ridges at the pitch. So that's where the leak, leak occurs, but the roof itself is really good. That's kind of the roof that you want, and that's kind of a building you want. And I would say, you know, a building of this type, it's, it's easily a, a sixty-year building class. That's how long it'll, it'll last, if not longer. Because what you have out there now, you've had one part, I think you have it for almost forty years. And the other one's about twenty, twenty-three or twenty-five years old, you know, the newer one.
Um, are you talking the, the lifespan of the steel structure? Or are you talking?
Both.
Okay, is there, in, in, in your report, is, is this in your report that's online? That we can see?
Yeah, this report.
Oh, okay. I, I missed that part.
Yeah, the whole detail, the estimates.
But the steel structure itself, is there a life expectancy of the clear span steel, not just the, the siding?
Uh. No, I, I, I didn't know the life expectancy, but I'm just saying that that's, that's what typical, you know, like these newer pre-engineered buildings, they have a higher, a better life expectancy, but, but when you combine it with a sandwich metal panel, it actually makes it much better and much.
Sure, yeah, no, I have a SIPs house, so.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. So you know what I've done, yeah.
But, but the actual steel girders, the, the, the metal structure, because siding can be taken, the walls and roofs can be taken off, you know, in a matter of day.
Yeah.
And replaced.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering, was this steel integrity inspected on this? So I'm just wondering, was this steel integrity inspected on this?
Existing?
Of the existing?
Oh, yes, yeah. Well, I could tell you that the um. The existing steel building does not meet today's snow load requirements.
And which code word does that refer to?
That would be uh Vermont, I believe they're on IBC two thousand fifteen, which is an international building code.
Yep, they're on, I believe it's, they adopted nineteen.
Did they, okay, okay, so that makes it worse then.
So, but with with.
For for the existing building.
With new panels, panelized roof can upgrade that, could it?
No.
Those codes?
No, no, it it doesn't, because, cause if if your structural steel is already not adequate. Having a strong panel on top doesn't do you any good.
But has that been confirmed by an engineering report that the building one and building two that was built in two thousand one? They cannot meet those codes?
Uh, well, no, not technically, I didn't, I did not hire an engineer, I just know from practical experience. My experience of in the construction industry that it does not.
Okay, but it hasn't been confirmed?
No.
We're we we've got a town of five thousand people, we've got a lot of questions before we.
Yeah.
Wanna go with almost a five million dollar investment.
Yeah.
So I I think we.
Well, there's all, yeah, we, but but the the lack of the snow load capacity is a kind of a smaller issue. You know, there's other issues beyond that, that the building size itself is not adequate. It leaks like a sip.
Which which new new paneled walls or new paneled roof could fix?
Well, but you can't do that though, because what happens is, once you start renovating, becomes a major renovation. You're gonna trigger all the current codes and you can't, you you it's gonna, it actually, it'll actually open up a channel arms for you code wise.
That what what, just what, what codes are we talking about?
Building codes.
Like Alcide, Omega Electric has gone in and renovated Bobby Miller, gone and renovated.
Yeah.
Hundreds of metal buildings. And if there's a snow load issue, you can reinforce.
They would reinforce it.
You can put arches from the columns.
Yeah.
And typically, the older the steel, the stronger it is.
Yeah.
The more high-tech, modern, particularly the harder, lighter steel. Actually is more vulnerable to excess snow loads than the old red iron.
Right, but they, but what they do though is they add whatever structure elements they need. To, you know, either reach sixty pounds or seventy-five pounds, you know, sto- snow loads. Because, you know, pre-engineer is designed to the minimum. That's why they call it, you know, that's that's why the whole pre-engineered industry, you know, came up the way they did. But yeah, you could spend all the money in the world to try to reinforce existing, but it's still, you know, the. The bay widths of the doors are not wide enough for you to put.
I I understand all of what you're saying. All I'm saying to you is that that there's heavy emphasis in this report.
Yeah.
On issues that don't necessarily pertain to the issue that we're talking about tonight. So I would just say to the select board that from a liability perspective. You can't sit on this until two thousand twenty-five, you've now published a report that there's unsafe conditions. For the occupants and the visitors to that building. And you need to address that now. Because either your manual, your procedures, from your play operations. I think you had something in there about a hand grab. You've now published a report that says. That the occupant building that is resident to functions of the town of Jericho is not safe. If you don't act now.
But it's I I I I see what you're getting at, you're you're saying we shouldn't be slandering our 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 building.
Well, particularly.
In order to, but but. We 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 asked for data, we got the data, we're not looking to manipulate the data. I don't think it's appropriate to get the report and say. Let's keep that one to ourselves, right? We get, we get a lot of flack for how transparent our government is and I I I don't like. I don't like the the road that you're trying to go down, of what you're saying is to hide it.
Issue is that you've now stated. That X, Y is.
I haven't stated anything, the data has spoken.
Report.
Yeah, the the data has spoken.
X, Y, and Z. I'm suggesting for the select. That if you don't act when you've been told that something's wrong. That's callous indifference and it compounds the liability. So if there's a railing over there that isn't tall enough, fix it. If there's a roof that's leaking, fix it. If there's uh rodent uh infestation, fix it. But don't use those arguments to try to say. Let's go to a new building because you're suggesting that you're gonna keep the building anyway. So in the meantime, I'm suggesting that we get. A code compliance report and an engineer report. And we act on it because you're not gonna pull those to building. You're suggesting that you're gonna keep the building for use and just the energy savings and possibly the grants to do that. Are available. So as a citizen, I'm suggesting, forget all about the new building. You have an existing building, you can't possibly replace it before two or three years from now. And each one of the employees and the circumstances. Need to be put into an advisory report so that the people who are occupying the space. Understand the hazards and they have adapted their techniques and their policies and procedures. So as to avoid any liability. The last thing in the world we wanna do is to have somebody get hurt. But that has nothing to do with moving to the new building, it has to do with the fact that we have an existing building. And as if I if I owned the bill and I had people in there and these issues came up. I would be negligent to not repair and upgrade now. And so you, I I'm not talking about transparency, but I think if you're gonna make a criticism. That it needs to be done by a credentialed code person you can invite. Uh, I find it hard to believe that we in two thousand one, that we had built a building. That didn't comply. Uh, and I agree that whenever you pull a permit to do an upgrade. Theoretically, labor and industry has the privilege of inspecting the whole building. And identifying any substandard conditions and making it a requirement of the repair. But that doesn't mean that we don't repair it. Because we have an investment at these prices, it's probably worth a million dollars. As it sits there, and if we have to spend a hundred and fifty grand. I think you'll see that in in future utility, energy savings, and the eradication of risks.
So there is no select board here tonight, we don't have a quorum, so I can't speak for the select board in any way, but I hear what you're saying, but.
Yeah, you made, Jim, you made that point, I think at the uh when Matt did his presentation, so I thought.
I don't think I was there. I made it.
I've heard, I've I've heard it before somewhere.
I made the point before.
Noted.
That uh, and it was like, but uh, so I'm just saying, which has nothing to do with the building, it's just. If if I were in your shoes, I would get people who have. The little garbage out of their name, that come in and say, yeah, that is a hazard. Here's a good remedy. I mean, we oftentimes just ask labor and industry. To come in and review it and act upon. But the uh, I wouldn't, I I just don't think arguing the the building. Is a problem because we're not recommending that we're gonna knock the building down. That we're gonna have to repair it anyway. So why don't we do a short term? Review, get it fixed.
Personally, my take on the whole thing is. Four and a half million dollars is an awful lot to ask from the taxpayers. I'm not looking to get to sink more money into the existing building after reading this report. I get your point that. We are identifying unsafe conditions and it it may be. You know, if it's two years and 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 they are unsafe, then yes, we are obligated to to. Fix them, um, but to me. I think moving forward with the the bond vote, which was not in any of our original plans when we asked for this review. I mean, it wasn't our plan to do eventually, but it was certainly not in our plan to do it this year. Um, but that's what we're doing because of the the direness of it. So if you're saying. I understand your suggestion is that we hire more engineers and get more consultants in to look at it, to confirm or deny. Some of the individual reports of of whatever. Sort of put money into that, and then if they come back with yes, and it needs to be fixed immediately or shut down or whatever that that mean, I I just. If there's a law requiring it that we do it, I suppose we have to do it, but my take is. I don't, I'm not looking to, I don't wanna put a hundred thousand dollars into that building.
But.
At all.
But Eric, you're not suggesting that the building, yeah, good, what you have. In my mind is deferred maintenance that was not carried out on a regular basis. And therefore, we're behind the power curve. That maintenance is not gonna go away. It's going to need to be gone unless you're going to destroy the building.
No, you don't need, the building can be used, cause you're not gonna, won't, if you have a new building. That building would not be needed for occupancy at all. I would not put a dime into this.
I I can assure you that I have not seen an in-depth business plan, but I've seen suggestions. That people are gonna continue to use that building to store equipment as part of this.
I, yeah, I I recommend using the building for cold storage and and refilling in that pit, get rid of that, cause that's. But for OSHA, you can't have a pit like that. So I'd get, I, that's the only money I would spend recommending is to get rid of that pit. But you have an asset that you can continue to use, cause you have other equipment that's sitting out there in the sun. They just, they have a a dry storage for them. It might, you know, why tear that down? I mean, that that there's some value to that relevant.
Five Eric's point that.
You're saying in the interim.
Investment in the maintenance of a building is not sinking or wasting dollars. If you repair an asset that you have to prevent it from having further damage. Or particularly any injury to any employees. If somebody gets hurt in a building that's theoretically unsafe. The adverse effect on your workman's comp line is gonna make fixing the building look like a a. Sales tax. It's, I I'm just saying, as a citizen, I'm concerned that if we don't have the best practices made. We don't have people being supervised, and I'm not sure that in fact. Properly ventilated pits are actually prohibited. I think it's a matter of they have to be maintained. Under supervised conditions with certain safety features like ventilation, so you don't capture gasoline. Or other flammable explosives into the into the pit.
Right.
And that because pits continue to be used. Because of the advantages, because in a pit, as compared to a lift, the vehicle can't fall. So there's reasons for pits, there's reason for lifts, there's reasons for for sloped ramps and so forth. They each apply a different, different.
I've I've not seen any pits, like under new construction scenario, ever being constructed again. You know, Jiffy Lube, those kind of places is different, but not for a highway garage or state garage. Or even uh any dealership, they don't, they don't do pits, they all do lifts. So so let's move on, please. Uh yeah, your your comments are noted.
I I have a question, so I I, the couple of months when you guys had your first walkthrough in the garage. Um, the the original building, the five bays, yes, it was tight in there, but the trucks can get in. But you can't close the garage door, so you had to get a shorter truck, pay more money for that.
Hmm.
My question was, why didn't they just put a six or eight foot shed roof off? And put a new door on so you could get the vehicles in? That probably would have cost what it took to retrofit one truck.
That's a good question, yeah.
Then then you make those trucks.
Been on the board a long time and known that they were doing.
Now have less resale value. So I know, but it's a with scenario on that older building. So getting. Getting those trucks, the dump trucks and the plow trucks into larger bays, I can see. Yes, cause it it was difficult to move around. But if you needed to, yes, you could put a shed dormer, shed roof off. So you could, so you could have a little more space, so you could walk, so you wouldn't have to crowd yourself between a truck and a door and a garage door. That's one workaround. Is, then we have.
Well, actually, can I answer that part? The way if if you look at the engineered, pre-engineered building, there's a lot of sheer banding, you know, bracings in the building. And I forget which ones those are in that building, but you could put an addition on there, like in like a little shed roof or something. But you still can't get through there because you're gonna have structural members that determine the width of that building. So every, so I think in that building, there might be one every other bay. But you still can't, you still, you still be able to get your truck through and get a, like a real clear.
Oh, true, I'm just saying that you could clear the dump body. And you could, you could enclose just the 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 dump body. So there is a workaround, but I'm not, I'm not suggesting that that be done to this building, that that older five bay. But if for some reason the bond vote, the bond vote doesn't go through, there is a way to gain safety. That could be one of the reasons, gaining extra space back there. The other, the other building that was built in two thousand one has three bays. That looks like it has enough depth, there was enough space. The only thing that that uh is lacking is um the doors, they don't have a a rubber pipe going in. Essence, they don't have an exhaust pipe going through. If we wanna retrofit or put new doors on. They're the same size bay and door of the new proposed building, which is a fourteen by fourteen door. So we have plenty of room in that new facility that was, the newer facility in two thousand one that was building. If we took another five bays and added on to that existing building. Now you're only adding five bays, right? Instead of building a whole new facility. You have your break room in that three bay area on an upper level. Below it, you have motor oil, you have, you 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 have other things that shouldn't be stored. With offices right above, right? It's kind of like, you don't put flammable below a staircase because you have E S, right? So moving that to the 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 whole office, the space, the bathrooms, the meeting rooms. You can put that into the other five bay building. Build bathrooms that you need, we're talking ADA, right now, the town owns three town buildings. Not, not one of them is ADA compliant. So I I I I think really pushing the users, because it's got an ADA bathroom, I think is kind of a moot point. And I mean, we're talking. And we're talking small money there. So that shouldn't be any thought of going and getting a new building because of an ADA bathroom. Um, septic systems, that can all be researched. New systems, the water system, I don't know where the well is. Is the new well gonna be any different, or are we just gonna have to use always filtered water? I know, I have a well, I can't use the water, I have to, I have to filter it and soften it myself. Because it's just not usable. Um, but the idea of adding on to that existing building seems to be. More efficient than building a whole new facility. Just another couple of questions during the walkthrough.
You'd have to add sprinklers too.
Sprinklers, that's fine, that that's an add-on.
You don't have a source of water for sprinklers.
Oh, I know, but you'd have to.
But you cannot get a source.
Store it.
Okay, that that's fine, adding sprinklers on.
And by the time you add addition, you'd have to sprinkle the whole thing then.
Yeah.
That's right, people, those are pipe.
Yeah.
Air filled pipes and you have water that that comes up. Now, the the lift bay during the walk around, I I talked with people that. Uh, know our truck facility in town, and they said their lift system. Very expensive, you have to be certified, each and every person has to be certified on it. They only use that lift system when they change transmissions. They use it for nothing else. They use it for nothing else.
Engines.
No, they said transmissions only. At our garage, we don't, we don't have the tech. The town of our size, we don't have the repair facilities to even do brake jobs. Right? We farm that up, which is a cost effective measure. We're never, I don't think ever gonna be using lift. I just don't see the feasibility of that. Another one is the the bay wash. I don't know what the breakdown of the cost is. Have other towns used them? Have they installed them? But what's the payback? What's the cost payback? And is it something like installing a jacuzzi tub in your new built house? Two years later, you figure, you know, I'd never use that, but but it cost me ten grand.
No, I I would, I would encourage you to talk to the town of Georgia or town of St. Albans. Cause they they had, you know, bay wash installed on both of them. They use it constantly because all that salt is just, it's maintaining and taking care of your equipment.
But but that can be also added on as another bay to our existing. Facility that was built in two thousand and one, that can be an add-on in the future, right? You're gonna, you're gonna. Ask people of this town to come up with a bond. And we're, we're not doing it in seconds. This year, we're gonna hit, we're gonna get hit with about eight seventeen to eighteen percent increase in school tax. And then now you're asking for another bond and and this building isn't built in mods. We can't do some stump, some this year period, this five year period, we add on. But I think. Every taxpayer here can't handle that seventeen to eighteen percent school. Raise, percent raise. This bond, even though that is gonna be softened by a year be. Because of uh ARPA money, we won't really see it until the following year when it really hits our tax bills. I I. You know.
Can can I, can I offer some some global perspectives? When you read this report, there are legitimate concerns. Particularly geotactical as to whether A, we should even be building there. We have a fifty year at least solid waste facility. Which was placed in an environment that it never should have been placed in. You don't put a solid waste facility into a sand pit with highly porous source. And the contamination of the well and the other issues could be directly related either to the uncovered salt. Or the solid waste, or both, or some other practices. So before we look at doing that, I'm strongly suggesting that an in-depth environmental study be done. To determine whether in fact it's appropriate to build there at all. Because if we wanna improve the maintenance on the vehicles, improve the care. And it is important for people that are working on a vehicle to be working with a clean vehicle. There's no municipal water there. Me and the town were offered in October two thousand sixteen. Hundred and twenty-five acres of land in closer to the center of Jericho that has municipal water. Four access roads and and Vermont gas. And it's free. Mary Alice Rivers in Donovan donated it for the benefit of the community. And we could research that site, which does not have a dump on it. And it doesn't have any well problems. And then you would be able to have a sprinkler system. Because there's a hundred and thirty-five thousand square foot human occupied building that sprinkled. Right there. Um, and you know, you've got the water because of the range where they. Built the new fifty thousand square foot building, the reason they brought the water line out there. So if, let's just say we really want to do an upgraded garage. I suggest that we'll probably out in front of ourselves to not consider other sites. And to not consider a coordinated facility. Because we, the taxpayers, pay for the fire trucks, pay for the school buses, and we pay for the town trucks. So why aren't we looking at an integrated facility? With the fire department that's right on the rivers as property, the school property, which is immediately adjacent to it. All those vehicles and those mechanical repairs and that type of facility. Could in fact be in an integrated facility. And that could be researched, but we do have free land that's actually better to develop over there. And it doesn't have anywhere near the risk of contamination and it's logistically closer to the overall demand. So if we take the energy that we put into this and back up two steps and say, okay. This is what we'd like to do. Is this the place that we should do it? And that's a fundamental, because before we go to feasibility.
But we already own the land that that we're proposing to put on, like.
But it's a contaminant.
We don't own the river's land. I know you wish that we did. I wish that we did too. We don't own it. The 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 fire department is.
The community, the the community.
Not really. The fire department owns it.
In October of two thousand sixteen.
But I I I I don't like, I.
Okay, we got Jim, Jim.
But the fact is what you're saying.
Jim, can can I, can I ask that we just take a timeout on the histrionics? And so we're here tonight to talk about the facility that's proposed. That's gonna go in front of voters on town meeting day. It'll be up to everyone watching. Everyone in town.
Want me to put my energy into publicly defeating this effort, John? Or we'd rather have a mature, professional conversation, don't we?
Well. Jimmy, you're talking, you're talking hypotheticals.
I'm not talking hypothetical anything.
You are, you are talking hypotheticals. We don't own that property.
You have an offer and a refusal thanks to efficiency.
But but Jim, that eight years ago, like.
So how how much time should we take tonight, Jim? How much time?
This time should have been taken before we got this far, John.
Okay, well, that's.
What were the bids? What were the bids for doing the feasibility study?
What were the bids?
Where's the RFP to do a feasibility study, to spend four and a half million dollars?
We we have someone who's done the work.
Did you do an RFP, yes or no?
Jim. Oh my god.
That seems simple.
John, this is just the beginning.
Okay.
We wanna do this in front of two hundred people?
Do you wanna do it in front of two hundred people?
Absolutely.
Jim, why are you here, bud?
Because I'm a concerned citizen that pays a lot more taxes than you do, and I watch this Mount Pheasants and I'm fed up with.
Mount Pheasants?
Yes.
Um, Eric.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully ask. That we take a timeout. And for the benefit of the people who are here, to walk through the proposal. As we came here to discuss it tonight, have the opportunity to do that. Can we do that?
Yeah, does anybody wanted to chime in and ask?
Any questions from people?
How many are are online anyways?
Sabina and Tom Jocelyn are the only two that are on, and I don't know, Tom must have just joined a few minutes ago.
I don't have any questions about this.
Okay, Tom?
Okay, I'll assume not. Um, I I don't, I'm sorry, I just joined in a few minutes ago.
Okay, great. So why don't we go through? I'm now rethinking my offer. Why don't we go through and then do questions and answers? So for people who don't want to. Hang out and listen to the. The the pieces that you brought up, which are important and can be addressed.
That that's where I was trying to go from the very beginning.
That would.
We're on a good roll, keep going.
Yeah, that would be great.
Let's hear the good stuff.
Thank you. So. So I'll go through this.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I I was kind of in the tail end here. You know, essentially, the what I'd said, but as far as the costs, this is cost that. Uh, that was gleaned from the other two garages that were built, you know, from St. Albans and Town of Georgia. And I included escalation costs for uh up to year twenty twenty-five. Beyond that, who knows what cost gonna gonna be at? I could tell you that during COVID, Town of Georgia got hit really hard because of the construction causes. He got, one of the stories I I had shared was that. The um, the just the rigid insulation, the below grade slab insulation. Uh, the vendors wouldn't hold it for more than twelve hours. That's how bad it got. And and they they basically, I made a recommendation to the town and said, you know what? Because that's one of the first things we needed to have in, and the the it was a long lead item. And so I told, I recommend that the town make the recommendation that they purchase. The insulation is like over a hundred thousand dollars worth. And I said, if the project doesn't go through, you can sell it, you'll make money on it. It's it's essentially it's a commodity. Uh, but the project ended up going through. We had to go through a lot of engineering because prices went up all over the place and. They ended up having a successful garage.
So we went through the schedule.
Yeah. So that's approximately, yeah, in high, high level, what the uh. What the schedule would would look like.
In in both towns, did they put their uh an RFP out for these projects?
For the uh.
Construction, management?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. They, actually, in Town of St. Albans, actually, they actually tried. Three other times. And then I got involved and then it passed, the bond passed. And then uh, then Town of Georgia, I was involved very, much earlier in that, that bond, and it also passed.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But yeah, I mean, it's, you know, the project will be bid out, be hard bid. And usually I, what I recommend is, is they have a a pre-qualified list of bidders. You know, for the bu- for the building, cause you don't want, you want folks who can provide a bond. And that have experience, and they can financially be able to handle project of of this size.
And St. Albans in Georgia, did they have existing facilities? That they just outgrew, or were they not properly maintained? Or what was, what was their scenario that they had to have a new building?
Um, both. So they, I grew and I would tell you that I thought. Town of Georgia. Uh, I thought their garage, their existing garage was really bad until I saw yours. Yeah, you know, Town of Jericho's garage was much worse. It's probably the one of the. Worst ones I've seen in the state of Vermont. I haven't been to Swanton or other places, you know, Milton, I know they're building a new. New garage, but um.
Now, is that reference to just the the older building that's five bay that's extremely tight? Versus the newer two thousand and one building that's three bays? And and is very spacious?
Well, it's combination of both, because you know, you talk about overhead doors, the standard overhead doors now is sixteen wide, fourteen high.
Which the new two thousand and one building can be retro to.
It's, well, depends on where the columns are.
They are, we, I looked, we measured, so they could accommodate a sixteen door. The newer oh, oh two, oh one.
Yeah, and I haven't, I I didn't look at that, see if it could accommodate that or not, cause you have to look at, I don't know where the uh. The overhead door mortar is on existing one.
Mm-hmm.
Because one of the lessons learned we had on St. Albans was that we actually didn't make the base wide enough on one of the doors. And that would, that begins, he became a huge issue because of where the mortar has to be located for the overhead doors.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that'd be offset.
But but as far as there there was in the newer three or three bay building, there was adequate space. Except the pit.
Yeah, maybe the width, but then you have the officer in the nose in the front. So that officer actually is kind of in the way of a usable bay.
It shouldn't be anywhere near the storage of fluids and everything else. That could be in the other five bay.
Yeah.
Or put it an attachment onto a building, get them out of that environment. Is, yes, for safety reasons, they shouldn't be housed above equipment.
Right.
So they can either move it to the older building or. You get a another office, even if it's, if we find that it's. It's a real safety issue. Bring trailers in, house them there. Get their safety so they have facilities they can use. And they're not in a dangerous situation. So if we do go to build the new facilities, yes, you can haul trailers in and house them there. But yes, sitting above equipment and everything just doesn't seem safe.
Can we go through the um financials with Brian since Brian's been here patiently?
Excellent.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
But.
Treasurer Stevens, let me be.
Good to go.
What's that?
Do you want me to stick around here?
Oh, uh, totally, I do.
Matt, I just have one more question. So.
Oh, yeah, unless.
Everybody um in the town, we're, if this this bond is being put up. So we're asking, we're asking everybody in the town for for this. Almost five million dollar bond, based on one report. This one report, can you, can you tell everybody who's listening and in the room? What your, what your background is and what certificates or education you have to back up this report?
I, well, I've been in the construction industry for over thirty years. And I've been on my own for the last nine years, my, as a consultant. And my primary role has been, I, you know, as an estimator and a project manager. And I worked for, uh, in Vermont, I worked for D W Construction, P C Construction, the two largest builders in the state.
Mm-hmm.
And then uh, out west, I worked for some big national multi-billion, you know, companies out west.
Okay. But as far as finance, the financial breakdowns that you gave us?
I'm an estimator. I've been an estimator for thirty, over thirty years. That's my, that's my bailiwick.
So you're telling us that it doesn't meet snow loads and those things? Do you have an engineering background or?
No, I I know, I know, cause I know that from what, you know, what the. Uh. You know, what the current snow requirements are versus what it was back there, you know, twenty years ago and then thirty years ago.
But you don't know what's built up there now. Did they build overcoat? Because hopefully we would build overcoat. When we build now, we wouldn't wanna build the minimum.
No, there, you build to the current code and the engineers and pre-engineered building. They designed only to that code, whether it's seismic, whether it's so- snow load or whether it's dead load.
Well, you can.
They're not gonna over, you're not gonna over design. For for pre-engineered building, not not an over designer.
Okay, so just going back for, going back to my one question here, we're, we're asking five thousand people to. Vote for this bond.
Yeah.
On one report. And you just told me you've got thirty years in the construction industry, but do you have any? Degrees, uh, of of a bachelor's degree, a college degrees, engineering?
No, I went to, I went to college, but I have real practical experience.
But but financially, you don't have an accounting, you don't.
You need to be accounting, accounted to be an estimator.
Okay, but we're, I'm just asking because we've got. We're we're asking a five, almost a five million dollar bond.
And we haven't, we haven't done. Used for Georgia and St. Albans.
Okay.
I have a track record, I guess that's.
All right, a track record, okay.
They needed new maintenance facilities, so I. You know, I I understand what where you're going, like, let's make sure we. It's not just some guy on the street like me, just taking guests, but.
Consultant, when we did, when we wanted to look at a new garage facility, was this put out to bid for consultants to bid on it?
Probably not. I don't, I don't know what the charge was.
How did you, how did you come into the Jericho network? How did you get contacted?
Actually, I was contacted actually when Todd Old Devil's here.
Yeah, we reached, we reached, it was basically work that had started pre-COVID. And again, me. And again, me, me, when I took over, I went back through when the conversation about. Uh the design of the garage happened. I reached out to um who is um gapping on the name of it? There was an architect in. Burlington that had been um identified and then. Matt had had some preliminary work, so I reached back out to Matt.
All right, and are you currently doing any other projects in town? Any consulting in Jericho for the town?
No. No, I while I'm doing the organizational assessment. Uh I'm doing that for the town of Jericho.
And what what is that?
Organizational assessment, just looking at the staffing, staffing load of of the of the town. And compare it to other.
Is that like, like salary, work studies?
Tom, it's a structural audit, so so the idea was to uh given given the ongoing discussion about. Staff capacity to achieve big projects. We wanted to get an understanding as to relative to other towns of similar size. Given uh what the charges are and what the project uh horizon looks like. What do we, where do we need staff?
On a municipal level?
On a municipal level and in comparison to other communities, are we in the ballpark? Are we way understaffed? Are we overstaffed?
All right, I'm trying to, I'm losing track of there because. If Matt's telling me he's got thirty years in the um construction and estimating field.
Yeah.
You don't look that old. Where where did you get your municipal staffing requirements? So I'm just trying to say the town is is getting these studies. Are you an expert at both of them?
Yeah, actually, I, you know, for other municipalities, I've done. Uh I tend to be like what we call the NPM, which is a municipal project manager. So a lot of municipalities, they don't have a full-time staff person to pursue special projects or feasibility. Of special projects, so they would hire someone like me. There's other, there's other firms bigger than me that do this also. And then that's all they do is, you know, municipalities. But I do organizational assessments, not just construction related. You know, and I help with permitting process and you know, due diligence.
Okay.
And just, and I do put RFPs out together for design services. And basically represent municipalities in the best interest.
Okay.
I make recommendations.
Understood, I got it.
Yeah, I mean, si- simply stated, we're looking for someone who successfully uh initiated. Overseen and got projects like this to the finish line for other municipalities of similar size. And the, you know, again, the uh regard regardless of your perspective on where you stand about. Viability or cost effective aspects of this project. The uh the the work that Matt's accomplished in Saint Albans in Georgia respectfully. Are respectively seemed uh like a great fit.
I used to live in Underhill, so this, this was.
Andy had local, Andy had local understanding.
Yeah, I do. I I had friends here still. I know this area really well.
Okay.
Used to hang out with mobs all the time, not farm, hiking, snow shooting.
I'd like to go back to the issue that I raised as to whether the facility. Whatever facility should be where it's proposed. I suggest needs to be investigated. If in fact, impervious soils, that contaminating waste. That could be seeping through the source, you've heard of radon and all of those things, one of the things that you try to avoid, pervious soils. Is to be in proximity to things like calcium chloride and things like solid waste. I think that the town should do some drilling and evaluate. Whether or not it's even feasible to get clean water for any facility. And particularly in the A site and the B site over there, I think. Having been here for many decades and watched what went into those dumps, including. Waste from the range. And I won't even get into the details of it, but the ends of some of those things like this that go into barrels could have. Things on and the appropriate way to deal with it is to see whether there's anything adverse there. And then and ask to the fire department if they're willing to honor their two thousand sixteen offer. Because there is a really desirable centralized location. That has got three phase power. It has Vermont natural gas, it has municipal water. In close proximity, and if God forbid there was a problem. All of the resources that I want to have in the event of a fire explosion are sitting on the range. So those are things that if you do an advisability study before you do a feasibility study. Is it advisable that we do this? And if we're going to do this, where should we do it? What are the key elements? What are the qualitative needs? And what are the priority of those needs? And just because we own it is not a good reason to go spend five million dollars. Because I don't think it would be very hard if the right people were employed. To gain a deed to the property that is now cleared. Of the act two fifty conditions and the act two fifty opens that were there in two thousand sixteen. I'm told have been closed. And now the solar site is there. And there's all types of crossover benefits. So if we're gonna do this project and we're gonna do it right. I'm suggesting that what the site is should be considered. And that means doing a significant environmental study of the existing site. And how to mitigate the current potential exposures from the facility that's there. Uh I think is really important and to make the appropriate upgrades and certainly training. Uh energy efficiency. And if there's a potable water problem, then do something about it, whether it's drilling a well. Or bringing in stored water. Whatever it is, we shouldn't be subjecting the employees to an environmental hazard. And I think the study has brought out a whole bunch of stuff that I don't think many of us were fully aware of. And this can be turned into a footing for quality advisability, feasibility. Details specs and then implementation. I don't see anything here. That would cause me to want to go forward aggressively in a high interest rate. Expensive environment, there's more probability of deflation. In the construction costs than there is further inflation. And from my life experience of building uh. Engineered and custom designed. Including the Marco Pruden, which is the principal franchise that DEW has and DEW's built buildings for me. That I think there's a great opportunity for this to be a win-win-win all the way around. I just think. That absent doing the type of advisability, feasibility, detail specs. Uh I think we're just moving tooth fast and that creates the type of division that we all want to move.
Thanks, Jim. You're on the record. Brian, shall we?
Sure, um John, how would you like to proceed? Uh you want to um. So I think if you could talk a little bit about the uh the bonding process. And then uh talk about uh briefly about implication. Uh in regards to tax valuation and taxpayer contribution.
Sure, why don't we, I'll just walk through a little bit in more detail what we have. Ahead of us here, um and just strictly starting with the the financial side um on its own. The projected cost of the facility at being four point six four five million. The idea here is that there would be upfront costs to be uh born. Um in ahead of an actual construction time period. Uh in a previous uh presentation, I think Matt had spoken about. Some of the other costs, upfront costs involved. And the good thing here is that we have, we would allocate some of the ARPA, available ARPA funds. That we presently have within the town to absorb some of those upfront costs. And it helps us to uh for for the timing side of this in particular. Um so that. That down payment of in effect ten percent would be basically. Uh upfront money uh for a- again, some of the those upfront costs, design fees and and permits, that sort of thing. That brings us down to a net financed amount of four million one forty five. And then the question is, okay, what are the financial terms under such an arrangement? Um we had spoken with Ken Lynch of the Vermont Bond Bank and. Um Ken's most recent update on interest rates. Really projected this at three point nine two percent for thirty year financing. And I think what's interesting is the the interest rates had come down since we last. Uh received a quote from Ken in late November. And again, will the rates continue to to go down? Well, the good thing is we're not committing at this point anyway. Uh the interest rate. Would probably be set at a future date when interest rates are expected to actually go down. So it's it's all, that's a bit speculative, obviously, but the current rate at three point nine two is certainly better than the previous rate that. Uh was quoted from Ken. Now, what does this mean in terms of uh total payments uh going out for the for thirty years? Uh the bond bank uses a a different type, it's not a straight amortization. What the bond. Bank does is take the total principal and divide it in this case by thirty years, so that. The principal amount is constant and that's what creates a variable interest payment going forward um. And of course, the interest goes down as the principal goes down, but the point is. Each income, each year, the bond payment would go down slightly and that's the same. Instance that we have here with the current bond on the the town hall renovation. Um so that's why the payment is variable. Now, taking that first year of uh the total payment of three hundred thousand seven hundred and eight dollars, what does that translate into? To a tax rate amount for the town. Uh taking this and absorb and using the grand list for twenty three, twenty four, the uh of seven million one twenty one. That's the tax rate of point oh four two two. On a hundred thousand dollar assessment, that's forty two dollars and twenty three cents for the first year. And then. Using a five hundred thousand dollar property, that'd be five times the forty two, which is the two hundred and eleven. And again. That goes down uh each year, the total payment goes down by about five and a half thousand dollars per year. So on average, the tax payment goes down uh as you can see in year ten, it goes from the forty two to the thirty five dollar amount. Now, what's interesting here is that we do have the potential, if we wanted to, to refinance the bond in. Oh, five to eight years is what Ken had mentioned to us. So in fact, if we decided at some point. In the future that we wanted to reduce the term of the bond, we could do that. And that might, over the life of the bond, reduce the amount of interest paid. But currently, as we can see in part four, the total. Interest paid to be repaid on the thirty year term at the three point nine two percent is two point five million. Total payments then of six million six sixty four. Um I I did point out in in item five that the bond that is currently uh. Still outstanding on the town renovations will term out in the fiscal year twenty eight, twenty nine. And that would represent a reduction of forty three dollars uh and fifty three cents, again on a five hundred thousand dollar property. So I mean, that's good news. In the future, the bond on this building um. Uh sunsets and that does have a. A a future positive impact over the total tax payments of the town. So that's a quick walkthrough. I think the variables are interest rates. Um the other question that I, the select board faced was what kind of a term? Was it twenty or thirty year term? And based on the idea that this is in fact at least a thirty year building. And probably fifty years, I I think is what Matt might has told us before. Um it's prudent to try to spread the payments out. Um there are two lines of thought on this, but the idea is that we wanted to. Have the least impact upon the taxpayers in the town by bringing it to the thirty year term. Um those are the numbers.
No, I appreciate you mentioning that because that was a uh pertinent discussion, the idea that the uh. Because of the age of the building that the uh cost over time should be stretched out and not borne by. Taxpayers specifically.
It 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 it's a great discussion as to who should pay and when. Um but.
Yeah, I actually be, I hate to admit this, especially tonight, um but that. Settling in more on the thirty year actually was from some of the comments Jim made um about. Let's not absorb all the costs when our kids are gonna be the ones with.
Who are going to benefit for it later on, that's right.
So that does kind of make more sense.
Yeah.
Um I I always just look at that interest price and you know, and you get kind of excited to try to lower that, but. Lowering it for, I don't really care if my kid pays for it.
You know, on a personal basis, I think each of us would probably make that decision. Let's absorb it upfront, so that we're not left with an obligation later in our life, but here it's a little different. Uh because as you point out, Eric, those that are in the town will be benefiting from this structure uh fifty years from now.
Right.
Sabina's got a hand raised. Sabina?
Hey, um I just had a question about um. The the ARPA funds, how, so where do we stand in terms of the what's left? If we're using.
That's with roughly, well, I guess Brian's here, he'll answer.
Roughly about two hundred thousand, uh and again, maybe it's a little less, we have had some miscellaneous. Um allocations, um but it does leave us. Actually, Sabina, I'm thinking that's about a hundred and fifty thousand left, I think.
Which isn't very much. I guess I'm just wondering, it seems like I I hear what you're saying that. We need to cover some of the upfront costs and this, I guess, to me, this looks like just the low hanging fruit, because it was. Um you know, essentially free money, but I also um. I know that we have a lot of things that we would like to do in the town. And I'm just wondering if other um sources of funding for this upfront cost. Need were considered um. So that maybe we wouldn't have to use quite as much ARPA money or or none at all. So that the ARPA money, which we wouldn't be then like taking out a loan to do projects, would still be available for those. Things, I mean, we we had talked about all kinds of things that 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 money could be used for.
So again, so not a select board meeting, it's an informational meeting, I can give you my take on it, but. We need to be careful, cautious about the record. I'm not even sure we should have still had this tonight, now that I think about it, we didn't have. It was warned as a select board meeting, we don't have a select board here, so I'm very nervous about policy stuff. Again, informational meeting, just throwing that out every chance I get, um. We did consider a lot of that, um. Gosh, I lost my train of thought when I gave all those like those um.
The use of the ARPA funds.
Yeah.
Now versus bonding out at four point.
Sorry, I I know the reason that um that what I wanted to say. I believe. Our date to have those funds allocated is rapid. I believe our date to have those funds allocated is rapidly approaching.
Yeah.
And that was, that was a factor that went into some of the decision of, of what we're, why we're using this money. Another decision is that that money is for all of us. And to Brian's point that he just made, that will be part of the investment that lasts for fifty, sixty years. So we're really trying to be thoughtful about, you know, about that money, what it was for, what its intent was for and for, you know, as Tom points out, there's five thousand people in the town. And so, so some of, those are some of the things that I can comment on that went into the discussion of why, of how we arrived at utilizing that money for.
Yeah, and I would add from, again, a financial perspective. And this is being sensitive to the comments that were made earlier today about the other taxes that potentially may be increasing by amounts that are going to be difficult. But the use of the ARPA funds does allow at least a buy-down of that principal payment due each year to the townspeople. And in that, again, that's a consideration, just being sensitive to the costs of the other pressures in other areas. And even today, I'm hearing tho, those percentages may have changed. And, and at least I understand this, I don't understand the educational side of things. But again, it's, the use of the ARPA was done in part due to the sensitivity of a potential increase in tax rate for this project, which after all is done in large part for the safety of our town employees.
Brian, can you talk a little, I know another part of the conversation was, you know, u- using that five hundred thousand dollar allocation has compounded benefit over time as well. So the fact that it, it, it's sort of meeting two goals. It's, it's, it's buying down the total cost of the bond on the front end.
You know, if, if just using the strict percentages here, what we're doing is we're, we're paying, is, this is a ten percent equity investment by the town in this project approximately. And so if you look at the savings of the total payments, cer, I'm certainly on the interest side, we're saving a substantial amount of interest payment by making that investment ourselves. It's, it's just like buying a home. The more equity you put in, the more money you're going to save in payments over the length of that mortgage.
I, I, I'd like to respond to what Brian just said because what I don't hear coming through in discussions in Jericho is that there's a lot of focus on interest. And it should be focused as well on the opportunity cost and the alternative investment theory. If we use our dollars today, I do think that we should use our ARPA. I think when I listen to all the different people, it would be great to have what the highest priority current needs are that pay long-term investment benefits should probably be sorted criteria for how those funds are allocated. And for example, if I went over and I reskinned the existing building, I solved the leaking issues and I made it safer for the employees, that's going to lower the risk to my mod for my work that's gone. And also for the people that are there. And the ARPA funds going in and fixing the existing facility is a very clear need that's demonstrated by all of us written here. You can also take a long hard look at, because people keep talking about the town's growth. The resources that the town is responsible for are not real. This town is not accepting new roads. So the fundamental premise that's oftentimes spoken about, the town's growing, but we, the individuals who own private roads, are the ones who are maintaining them, that are plowing them, that are sanding them, the town is not. And if we apply our energy to, should we even have that type of vehicle? Given the fact, the energy costs and the potential tax for energies, we can take and put all this energy, take this report, build upon it and do some really positive things because at the site visit, I listened to that the old drivers really like the old plows. The newer drivers, not so much. Because the, the newer articulated plows can also come in detachable version. So the plow is not actually stored inside the building. And the plow is not as long. And because it can be flattened instead of piercing up, it allows for different flexibility design. And for example, if we should have a wash facility, which just sounds like we should, that can be implemented very quickly. That's not a big permanent issue in Sun. And it's probably something that's available on prepackaged buy. Because we always look at pre-engineered buildings. And the premise that's been discussed tonight, that a pre-engineered building is always at the minimum spec is absolutely not true. We buy engineered buildings to save on all of those unnecessary upfront costs because the pre-engineering, because these buildings are getting built all over the country. And I can go buy the beam study for the town of Charlotte. I can go buy the beam study for zero because this is all public domain. You've got a new garage in Charlotte, you've got a new garage in Milton, you've got a new garage in Georgia, you've got a new garage in St. Albans. And pulling all the data from those studies together does not cost a lot of money. And interviewing those people does not cost a lot of money. And I think it was Charlotte that said, whoops, we're not going to go on the cheap on this building because energy costs are going up and we don't want to contribute to global warming. We're going to do geothermal. And just like Matt's conversation about rigid foam, I'm looking at this subject right now and I'm being told by experts, don't use the rigid foam. The rigid foam is very difficult to work with. It's not as, it's tough to put in place. And then you got to be careful when you're pouring your concrete. But you can go and blow the same material out of a gun and create a coat. And then you can put your concrete on top of it. So rushing into these decisions, after over fifty years of making these decisions, every time I rushed was a mistake. And I've been responsible for a quarter of a million square foot in Colchester. And we went out to all these people. And our line was the client decided, holy shit, we can do this easier ourselves. So I, I for one, would love to see all of this work become a baseline for a further study that works really hard. H, are we in the business and doing it the right way? So we design a facility that meets not just the needs today, but the needs in fifty years? That deals with the environmental things? And what are the priorities? I would much rather go out to the employees today and say, we ordered a modular employee rec room with showers and it's going to be here in three months. It doesn't have to be wasted, it can get picked up again. I just deposited thirty-three thousand five hundred pound building sections and we did eight thousand square feet in three weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do, I do get where you're coming from and I don't necessarily disagree. But what I, when I think about it, what I worry about is the message that it sends to our employees. If we were to say, okay, we got this report. You, 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 you're working in unsafe conditions. We're going to study, we're going to do like two years worth of studies before we figure out what we're going to build, where we're going to build it. We're going to research every, every possible way.
Fixing them tomorrow.
You're saying we band-aid, we band-aid it.
You're really concerned about them today. And that you're going to get these things done.
But I, but I think, I think if they were to see us take Matt's recommendation of we shouldn't use this building. And instead, we went in and said, ah, we can fix it, we'll get a new eyewash, we'll get a new wa, you know, I think that, I think that message, I, I personally, I don't, I don't think that message would land well with, with the crews. I could be wrong.
And that's not the, that's not the sole determinant, but the reality is that it is, people have the opportunity to go and work in facilities that are going to feel more supportive, more, more highly functional. And they, they have the option. The, the market out there for public works, uh, help is moving fast. And it is part of our goal, my goal in my role to make sure that we're investing in, as you've said, the people who are most important to making maintenance in the town work, because we could easily lose them.
Right, and we want to add value to their, to their facility. But the, the town has taken a path to do an accessibility study for only a new build. Right? And we have Matt's report for that. The town, however, has not got someone in to do a feasibility study of what we can do to add on to that or improve that facility at a much reduced rate. And if you could have that study and you can show the highway crews that you value them in here, look, I've got another study of equal importance and it will show, I'm taking care of you. I'm going to give you a safe facility. And it's not going to cost five million dollars, but you're still getting the same things you would get with Matt's report. And we haven't gone down that road. And I think everybody in this town, before we make a bond vote, you've got a new feasibility, you should have someone come in and do a feasibility about making improvements or additions to that facility. You're, you're asking a lot here based on one person's report. I, I don't want a bad mouth, Matt, seems like a very capable person, but he seems like he's got too many hats out there. He's saying, we want to take everybody in the town and say, all right, we're going to go with his recommendation to spend five million bucks. He's also got another hat on who says, oh, this is staffing levels for municipal buildings for workforce inside the working town. Well, which expert hat does he have? I don't have the confidence to make that vote based on, and then he added another thing that he does in his business. For someone who doesn't even have any degree or certification and he's making assessments on this building, I, I, I just don't buy it. So I'd like to see a feasibility of what it would take to improve that building or to have someone with accreditation and certificates come in and tell me, hey, this is what's specifically wrong here. Right? I'm, I, I work out in the la, I'm a trustee at the library. We're doing the same thing, we're trying to make the library eighty-eight accessible. We took the steps of having a structural engineer report done on the building before we did our next baby steps. We have, from an engineering standpoint, we have a study. And half of it was paid through with grants that we harvested. Think we should take the time and do the same thing with this facility here and have an engineering firm see, this is what you have, good bones or bad bones, either say, hey, walk away from this thing, or hey, the bones on this building are good and this is how you can improve it.
So, so Tom, you're basing your concern on his credentials? And the fact that there, and the fact that there is not a certified engineer?
I'm basing it that first is that we did a feasibility study for a new building. And we did not do a feasibility study for what we have. That's my first concern. Before you go ask me for five million bucks, the town for five million bucks. The second would be, yes, you're asking for one person's report. Supposedly an expert report. But to me, he seems like he's an expert in too many fields and he doesn't have the qualifications to back a bond vote for five million dollars. That's my personal opinion. Okay, and that's been entered in.
Yeah, and the good townspeople will have to, yeah, they'll have to decide if they agree or not.
And I realize this is not, this is not fully attracting, recruiting, rewarding and motivating employees is a very, very important job. We're not going to buy that with a five million dollar building. But a human resources review of what are the things that do cause Jericho to be the most attractive place for quality people of long duration, I think is really important. Focusing in on a three-year in the future, I would suggest that we don't have a human resources study, which tells us because when I talk to the employees, their vehicle management, trust, transparency are all important things. But we've had relatively high turnover. And we used to have more stability in that area. And now people are poaching employees, buying them in the short run, with all these other things. And I think that there probably is a great opportunity. And since Brian spent all the time in the resources, one of the finest people, the businesses out there that studied how to do this work was General Collector. They documented a lot of it. And is clean, safe, attractive, modern facilities a part of the puzzle? Absolutely. I think you might seriously want to consider what is the best way to actually get there? And how can we do things better sooner for less? Without just throwing this away. But going forward in an environment like we're in, at the level of information that's there, trying to justify it based upon code and all these other things. Let's just say that it turns out that the environmental soil study over there turns out to be a problem. The credit union at the corner in, in, in past corners in the, in the they went in to build the building. And all of a sudden, they came back before the floors and the building that shifted because the geological study hadn't been done actively and they missed an old stream. This stuff, putting the time and the energy in upfront always saves money. It avoids conflict, misunderstanding, and it demonstrates to the public that we're doing our job correctly. And I think this is a great opportunity to strangle it from this and say, hey, out of this, we've realized that there's some existing hazards, that these employees are precious. So we're going to do A, B, C, and D, employing some of the ARPA funds on these priorities. And I think that, you know, I think the employees would say, they're not saying no. They're just saying, is there a better way? And I'll just use for example, if I were going to put a wash bay facility in, I wouldn't put the wash bay facility in close proximity to my electronic tools and my other equipment, I'd have a drive-through standalone facility just like the.
In the world to go with this, is, is there, is there a point where the town is going to have a highway crew director? Is there a point where the town is going to have a highway crew director? Directing this, helping this project? There don't, it, it wouldn't, because you know, like, like I was just talking about the library. We, we wouldn't think of doing a library improvement or additions. Without their tremendous amount of knowledge that our library director has. So would the town be going down this road without a director for the highway crew?
So the person, the person that has been envisioned to oversee the project wouldn't be. An employee of the highway department. We would have a project manager.
But do they have experience in a highway environment?
We would, we would, we would have to, we would have to do, so for construction. And, and a project management, we would have to put it out to bid.
I, I get that, but so are you telling me that in the future, moving forward, we're not gonna have a highway crew director?
A road foreman?
A road foreman or the, I think, the, the direct, I think it's listed as director. Highway crew director, I think on the town website.
We have a road, we have a road foreman, that's the director of the highway department.
So, so we have a director? I don't know the, the term director.
We have, we have an interim road foreman whose position is gonna be evaluated in April.
Okay, so I think that they would be an important asset saying, hey, why not? Are, are we gonna use this lift? Uh, you know, is this gonna be a quarter million dollar lift that we're never gonna use because we're not certified and we can't be trained? How are we gonna be, are we gonna need all these other things? You know, that aren't included in this report, we're gonna drop this amount of cash, but. This is only one person's recommendation based on mirrored projects from other towns. Did he harvest what we actually, did he?
Yeah, he interviewed, he interviewed the road crew, yeah. Yeah, he interviewed the road crew, um, came and did onsite work with them a couple of times.
And I, I do think that having a select committee of qualified citizens, I listen to people that live in town to care. Who talked about their thirty years of experience in this business. And what they're doing, and you think about the conversation about the trucks you were buying. And you think about Brian's conversation about financing. Right now, John's comments about the availability of quality people. It may well be not a bad idea to look hard. Everyone, we should even own these pieces of stuff.
I know you made that, she made that comment before, I know.
Whether they should be leased, and if they're under a seven-year warranty, then we're not doing. The work during the seven-year period of time. And therefore, looking at this from the top down with stall bases. If we did a business analysis. Which I think is something that's quite feasible to do. To help make sure that as we make these decisions. That we're, that we're talking to our vendors, we had two vendors here one night, obviously competing for an order. And obviously, the state of Vermont and many other municipalities are favoring one vehicle and financing methods. And I think that this is an opportunity to put together an organizational structure. For the public works department. For the vehicle purchases, I mean, these things are expensive. Um, but we went ahead in the direction with only one bid. For a road grader, it's a thousand seven hundred grand. And you go through all of this stuff, and I think this is an opportunity to apply professional process. To make sure that we're not doing the wrong things.
So the bond, so one thing I, I, I think about it, the bond vote that will be on the ballot, it is, is out there, it is too late to change it. Though that is going to the ballot tonight is an informational meeting to. Get as much information as we can about it, there will be another one, um, closer to town meeting day, twenty-sixth.
Yeah, February twenty-sixth.
Um, but that, should this pass, that gets us the bond. It doesn't lock us into.
It gets the authority to.
It gets us the authority to borrow the money, it does not lock us into that design. It does not lock us in, I mean, I s- I suppose budget-wise, it means we couldn't go higher than that, but it doesn't lock us into anything other than. It gives us the ability to borrow the money, it doesn't mean that we won't do a good job researching. And then it won't go out to bid and that we won't try to save money as, as best we can, or we, or we go, oof. Brian thinks if we wait six more months, we could, we could get another quarter point, whatever, like. It, it doesn't lock us into any of those things, but it does get us the urgency to get this thing replaced, which. We became, we the select board, your select board that you voted for, unfortunately, I'm sorry that you picked the three of us. But that we picked, that we decided, yeah, okay, it's time. And so that's why it's, that's why it's on the ballot, that's why we've done these things, that's, I appreciate your comments. I totally agree, it's up to the town, it's a huge amount of money, on top of, on top of. Whatever the eighteen, nineteen, whatever, whatever that shows up to be, I, I don't have any desire to add an extra. Whatever that is to my taxpayer, totally get it.
We, we, we can, if we authorize a financing facility. Which I don't need to use it as billing. Uh, you're getting an authorization from the voters to borrow this money. How the money is actually going to be employed is a question. Could in fact, uh, equipment, let's just say a mold piece of equipment. Be included in the bond is something I think that would be important, because if you're standing there in the town meeting, you're saying. What you just said, I would encourage fleshing that out and also say. How we're going to go without making sure that as we move forward with this. That we're gonna look at all of the strategic planning issues, for example. Are we going to stop forcing all of the roads? Onto the property owners, the homeowners associations and stuff. That's a big question, and if we are going to make that change. Or if you listen to the debate on silly hill and raceway. Are we going to go pavement versus dirt and all those other things? I think that if you say, man, there's some really big questions out here, we're all in a new world. That COVID and, uh, material shortages and all of these other things. All we're saying is that we would like the town of Jericho to commit. That a financing facility of up to four and a half million dollars. Amortized over thirty years to be employed in this way for the long-term benefit of the town. I think people could get behind it, if it's this specific project. Done this specific way, and we're gonna continue on that basis, then. I gotta say, I don't support it, I do think that we really need to look hard. At where we're gonna put it and do the, all the environmental studies. Before we do it, just the calcium fluoride that's been sitting over there in the rain. We should be thinking about covering the salt, just like they do all over on the north way. Because, and catching that leaching, so there's lots of good things, so if we say we're gonna, you know, we got a lot of money in equipment, we've got. Valuable employees, and we think that we're gonna need to spend like this amount of money to do it right. I think maybe, uh, a salt dome, uh, uh, a leakage capture. Uh, but I would really look hard at. The value of being in proximity to sharing plenty of water, to being closer to the center of Jericho. To have natural gas, look at geothermal. Work together with the fire department and the school district and see whether there's any cross pollinations that can occur. And then because people that drive school buses have the same license as people that drive. Uh, trucks and coincidentally, when they're getting plowed. Typically, the school buses aren't moving, so I think there's a great opportunity for positive synergy here. We could turn this into a really positive and successful project if we open up our minds. And show them, show the public that we really wanna do something very, very well. Could have to be beneficial to the whole community.
We will, okay, thank you.
Alright, and with that, uh, I wanna thank anyone who's still out there. Thank you for joining, hope you, uh, met your objectives of getting the information you sought in regard to the. Uh, proposal for the new town maintenance facility. Uh, bond for which will be voted on at town meeting on March fifth. Thanks for being here.